Weather has broken and it's actually pretty nice out for a change. So, still rolling along with summertime. We're going to begin with the pledge and then we invite you, if you so wish, to join us in a moment of silence. Please keep all of those in our armed forces and those in public safety and your thoughts and prayers.
Amen.
Thanks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, gentlemen, priority, Carol. Commissioner Frazier.
I have to say, I was away this past week. It's a place that had very little of any cellphone reception, so I have nothing to report, except it's nice when no one can get ahold of you, I have to say that.
All right, very good. First item on our agenda, oh, awesome.
I just want to give a couple of quick shout-outs. Actually, the moment of science kind of kicked it off in my head, the men and women in blue. I went on a ride-along with the Baltimore Environment Police the other day. They govern the Liberty Reservoir, mostly that's within both District Five and along with Commissioner Weaver's district up in...
Two.
It is two, but not one, but two. And just, you know, they talked about the safety, security of the reservoir. Very impressive organization. The second is, we got word the other day from our sheriff of an action that was taken by a young deputy in dealing with a challenging situation. And, not to get into the details about the situation itself, but about what the decision-making that this deputy had to go through and ultimately made. And what he went through was using the most non-lethal measures possible, even in a very difficult situation, to end up using a taser on the subject. What impressed me was a young policeman like that having to go through decision-making really is a testament to the training and the skillset that they're taught through the academy and then through the leadership from our sheriff and the entire department, because it could have gone a completely different way and may have been justified in the other method, but sticking to the rules of engagement, understanding how to handle a situation, again, is a testament to our men and women in blue that serve our community. And last, I am the last one to walk with the commissioner, so those that want to take a stroll in Freedom Park, please join me at seven o'clock this evening. I understand Commissioner Weaver had 60, 65 folks with him, so...
Wait, what?
Just saying, at least that's the word I got.
He cheated.
That's the word I got.
That's the word in the street.
Anyway, look forward to seeing you tonight.
And free snowballs afterwards.
And free snowballs afterwards.
I may go ahead here. I want to echo what you said about the use of tasers here. They were probably the best item we've ever purchased here as county commissioners for the Sheriff's Department. I don't know how many lives they've saved. Time and time again, the sheriff has pointed out where a taser is used, where they would have to use lethal force otherwise, and it's saved quite a few lives. So that is one thing that we have done well in this county. And the detention staff uses them, all they have to do is pull them out, people will quit. They know what a taser feels like and I've talked to police officers and said they're the best item they have, better than mace or anything else we have, so it's worked well. I do want to congratulate our Public Works and Rhodes people for Monday night's episode or this weekend's storms. They have done a tremendous job of helping getting roads open, cleaned up, getting power restored. It's been a combination battle in Fanksburg. It really got hit hard, as well as other areas of the county, but they did a great job in putting that together. The other part is, we did have Comptroller Francho in Carroll County here Tuesday, and just want to remind people of, I think it's August the 11th through the 17th, it's tax-free buying day for items less than $100. You don't have to pay tax on it, clothing, certain items, especially school items, so he mentioned it, the state may lose $1 million in revenue that week, but it would be gained in, gain back in secondary purchases and whatever other people get. So, he was up recognizing a few places, and one was the Cornerstone Award Simmons Ice Cream Store in Snyder'sburg. If you've never been to downtown Snyder'sburg, it's a little store there with a baseball field behind it, but they do a tremendous job, been in business since 1922, and they were really appreciative that they were the Cornerstone Award winners for Carroll County for this year, so it's great. And I do thank all the people who came out to the walk in the park. Hokie was really leading the pack and did a great job, so.
Did you count him? Hokie? Okay, see, there's cheating going on.
He's got four legs.
Well, and Hokie has four legs, so that's eight.
Yeah, there's cheating.
That's right.
And Hokie brought his friends.
Thank you, commissioners. As someone who started out their career in welding thanks to a vocational education in a high school, a headline caught my this morning in the paper. Two teachers from Carroll County Career Technology Center are among 50 from across the country who were named semifinalists for the 2019 Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Prize for Teaching Excellence. Michael Campanelli and Michael Suetchenberg entered the competition as a team reflecting how the welding and masonry programs often work together on projects. The 50 were chosen from nearly 750 applicants nationwide. According to the news release from Harbor Freight, first prize will be $100,000, split 70-30 between the school and the individual. Second prize winners will each be awarded $50,000, with $35,000 going to their schools and the program, $15,000 to the teachers. So that's tremendous. These teachers are setting a good example for students, they're achieving excellence and bringing revenue into the county. Also, I'd like to give recognition to two of our directors who gave me tours this week. First was Airport Manager Mike Myers, who gave me a tour of our airport facility and introduced me to the Sky Tech President John Foster, and emphasized what I believe is very important is a business-public sector collaboration, which creates the airport as a profitable institution for us. Sky Tech employs over 44 employees, they've made over $1.7 million investment into the airport, which is a good anchor for us, so they generate business and are part of the economic prosperity of our community. So, thank you very much, Mr. Myers and Mr. Foster. Also, I did a tour with Stacy Nash, Transportation Grants Coordinator of our transportation system. I was able to ride the Trailblazer system and the Transit Bus Service, met and talked with several bus drivers and utilizers of the service. Everyone was very happy with the service that is provided by the county, we have very clean buses, and also witnessed one of our county mechanics going over a checklist with all of our drivers, how to maintain proper maintenance on our buses. So, as someone who knows the importance of maintenance, it's good to see that our drivers are involved in doing a checklist, making sure their buses are up to par and safe for our constituents. So, thank you for all the tours this week.
All right, and just a couple of things for me. In addition to thanking the folks in Public Works for Monday night's activities, I also want to thank our fire and EMS and our law enforcement folks that were out on the streets. Unfortunately, we did have a death in the county as a result of the storm, so I want to make sure that we give a shout-out to all those folks that while everybody was hunkered down, they were out in the middle of it and doing what they needed to do there. And also, a shout-out to our dispatchers. A lot of folks forget about the fact that our dispatchers are like the number-one boots-on-the-ground people. Wouldn't be for them, we wouldn't know where to go when we're on our fire engines. So, they took an enormous amount of calls during a brief period of time, so kudos to all the folks out there as well. 4-H Fair starts on Friday or Saturday?
Sunday, actually. Saturday, I think.
Sunday's the car show?
The car show Sunday?
You're judging, right? You want to judge this?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Cars will be older than us.
Some of us.
It's a very tough shoot, it's some of us.
But make sure, if you have a chance, it looks like the weather's going to be good. Talk about a great thing for young people, and not only young people, our seniors get involved in that too. There's a Senior Citizens Day out there, which is leading me to my next segment, but...
Did you have it?
No. But I could. But a lot of great crafts, the bake sale is Wednesday night, kids are spending days and days baking cookies and cakes, and y'all need to get out there and partner with some of your money and buy some of those cakes, so I don't have to spend so much. And then the livestock sale's Friday night, and that's where Dick cheats again, because he makes people buy the wrong side of the pig. So, there's that. Anyway, make sure you get out there next week and support our 4-H folks and everything that's surrounding that. Mount Airy Fire Department Carnival is this week, make sure you, if you haven't yet, go down there, some great food down there. Tonight's the parade, led by an award-winning band. And finally, we're saying farewell in the coming week to two very long-tenured employees here in Carroll. It's always tough for me to do, because, man, when you talk about the dedication, I mean, we, you know, people come in here and scream and yell at us about all kinds of things and scream and yell at everybody, you know, rarely do we get thank-yous. It's one thing I learned about this job, don't get a whole lot of thank-yous. But behind all the things that go on is a tremendous staff here in county that is extremely dedicated to making sure that Carroll remains number one in the state of Maryland, and we are number one in many, in many areas. By the way, we are the lowest, we have the lowest unemployment ranking rating in the state of Maryland. It's the first time since I've been a sitting commissioner that that's occurred. We're at 2.8%. Yay for Carroll County again. But I want to give a shout-out to Supervisor of Community Services and our senior and community centers, Patty Witson. We had a party for her yesterday afternoon. Patty has, well, everybody knows Patty, and before there was Patty, there was Mike, so the Witson family has put their footprints and fingerprints all over this county. And when you talk about our senior centers, those five places are amazing. There are people that come from other counties that want to get into our senior centers, because we do it better than anybody else. Another shout-out for being number one in the state of Maryland. But I want to wish congratulations to Patty and thank her for the many, many years that she's put in. She's been here since 2001, and she did a tremendous, tremendous service for all of our aging population here in the county, and we wouldn't be where we are without Patty. So, congratulations to her. And we're also going to say farewell to a gentleman who also has his fingerprints on many things here in the county, and that's Mr. Scott Moser. Scott is our Deputy Director of Public Works. Scott's been here since 2005, and I've worked with Scott really closely over the many years, even before I got into this seat. We have one of the best public safety training centers in the state of Maryland, and it's as a result of the work that Scott did. And so, I want to say thank you to Scott for all that he has accomplished in Carroll as well. He's a tremendous individual and is going to be sorely missed. So, they're leaving in the coming weeks, so I encourage everyone to reach out to both Patty. Patty has, showing with the dedication that she has, she's going to stay through next Friday, through the 4-H Fair, to make sure that the senior day goes off as it should. So, want to talk about dedication? Y'all can scream and yell at me all you want about the things that I do or we do, when we talk about people like that, the screaming goes in one anger and out the other for me. And Scott, I don't know what to say about Scott, other than the fact that many of the buildings that we are working in and many of the things that have been accomplished over the years in building construction is as a direct result of Scott. So, I want to wish him the best also in his retirement. And I'm going to stop. All right, first item on our agenda is a charter procedure overview, and I'm not a betting man, but I would bet there's probably public comment. So, we'll start with that.
The first public comment is Ms. Dupin.
Good morning, board members. My name is Muri Dupin, and I live in Mount Airy. I am also a member of the Steering Committee of the Grassroots Group Vocal Carroll County. Vocal has formed a charter study group, and yesterday we sent you a preliminary analysis of the arguments to date, both for and against. Vocal has not taken a position, except that we want the public to be more fully informed and engaged, ideally providing reasoned and reasonable input. Our study is not complete, but given that this is on the agenda for today's open session and a decision is possible, I would like to make a few points about how we hope you approach that decision and use our work. Study group participants include individuals whose personal positions are for, against, neutral, undecided, or unknown. We have done our best to make sure our efforts reflect a fair, fact-based approach. It's important to recognize that some pro-charter rhetoric has clearly been overstated, some anti-charter tactics have been questionable. Many of the factors you might consider are opinions reflective of varying philosophies, often devoutly held about what good government and inspirational leadership look like. How you decide to proceed may depend on how you frame it, on whether you think switching to charter is supposed to solve a problem, if there is a problem, or believe it would actually create them. You might think it would be more accurately framed as pursuing an opportunity, or more skeptically suspect it would just be changed for change's sake, or some combination of perspectives. Our group advocates for all citizens to have a voice. One claim that we dispute is the idea that any individual or interest group can speak for all or even a majority of residents. As our elected representatives, you are vested with the authority to make decisions on our behalf, and we trust you to be conscientious in representing all of your constituents, being mindful of what you think they want or would want if presently uninformed on the subject, and what you feel most benefits them. One final thing that we wish to reiterate is that Vocal does not believe this is a partisan issue. Arguments for or against charter that rely on political polarization should be irrelevant. This is a difficult, complex, and often confusing issue, and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Taylor.
Hi, I'm Sally Taylor from Eldersburg, Maryland, and I'd like to address the portion of the agenda which reads "Possible Vote on Charter." As Governor, as Commissioner Rothstein said in a January 10th meeting, "If we vote to set up Charter Board, quote, 'We have determined that charter is the way to go,' quote." But also in that same meeting were promises of public hearings, of work sessions, of meetings with other jurisdictions, which simply have not occurred. In fact, the voting record of that meeting said, "Staff will invite Maryland jurisdictions which have experienced a similar process. Staff will invite Maryland jurisdictions which recently transitioned to a different government form. The meetings will preferably occur in the evening, so citizens can participate in the education process." In fact, the motion said, "Direct staff to put together, with a sense of urgency, a plan to bring other communities and jurisdictions so the board can have the opportunity to listen and learn on how they transition from governments," and I believe it's supposed to be more than just charter, but also home rule from commissioner forms of government. So, all of these things have not occurred. I would encourage you to take that measured approach that you all had outlined and voted on on January 10th and provide those types of meetings so that we all have a comfort of what the options are as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Holstein.
Morning, Commissioners. Chris Holstein from Taylorsville. Back in January, we had Charter, Listen, Learn, and Lead. Charter government was the first item on the first meeting agenda for this board. I've been listening. The county held two forums on charter. The forum at the Community College provided data about the process, but nothing that justified changing the government to charter. And at that meeting, I asked Mr. Victor Travalla, who assisted in developing the Frederick County Charter, "How is it that the county commissioner can forbid the executive branch employees from even talking to the county council members?" His answer? He didn't know, he'd have to look at it. The forum at the county office building provided contradictory information. The panel advocated for charter with the county executive. Delegate Krebs said Carroll County was the best county in the state. When she was asked if Carroll was the best county, "Why should we change the charter?" She paused and said, "Well, that would make us better," but she didn't really say how. When the panel was asked if charter were implemented, would the elected officials recuse themselves for running for the county executive? None of the three elected officials would recuse themselves. In a poker game, that's called a tell. The Republican Central Committee voted seven to nothing to support commissioner form of government and opposed charter. I heard radio ads on WTTR opposing charter. I heard that many citizens contacted this board opposing charter, including a letter from the Women for Democracy in America that has thousands of members. And I've seen a couple of signs starting to go up that are opposing charter. Now, this is what I've learned. The change in government has not been justified. The county executive is a very powerful position and is not subject to the Open Meetings Act. This means the public will not be able to watch and listen to the decision-making process currently in place under the commissioner form of government. There is nothing that charter government can do that commissioner form of government can do or can't do, except maybe get the local ordinances approved a little faster. A small number of politicians is pushing charter to create a powerful, high-paying government job that they can pursue for themselves. Charter government, charter grows government, concentrates power, and raises taxes. Citizens do not want charter government. Charter will not save us from British rule. That happened a couple hundred years ago. And Lead, if you decide to vote today, please vote no on forming a charter writing committee. Thank you.
Ms. Allison.
I'm Kathy Allison, live in Eldersburg. Thank you for doing this meeting. I'm kind of pleased that Mr. Burke is going to give us the facts and Ms. Berry is going to give us the timeframe. Meanwhile, I will say that I am for keeping commissioner. I think we have a lovely county, and commissioner is what made it. And I like to have a lot of representation. I also have a question that has not been answered. If we were to change to charter, in considering that change, I would like for you all to present the voters of Carroll County with a list of 10 powers the state will grant to charter government, which commissioners do not have. I have gone over, as best I can, the titles in the local government, titles nine through 15, which 14 and 15 are reserved, but there's something in there called the Quick Powers Act, and that seems to be the little area that may authorize a few more powers, but I can't find something significant. So, I hope that y'all can make that very clear to the public, what reason, 10 good reasons, why we, it's to our advantage to change, and I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Next is Mr. West.
I'm Don West. I live here in Westminster, and first of all, I appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you this morning, and thank you for having this discussion. I also want to personally thank Commissioner Wance, because you said you never get any thanks. So, thank you.
Seriously?
I was listening.
My day is made now, Don. So, thank you all very much.
There you go. And seriously, I thank all five of you. It is a tough job, and you guys, I'm sure, you know, the buck stops there, so thank you all for what you do. I'm going to keep my comments very brief, I've already taken almost my first minute with saying thanks.
That's good.
It is probably a good thing, the less I say, the better. I have listened to the discussions over the last several months about charter, the pros and the cons, and I've heard a lot of misinformation, scare tactics, as I'm sure you have. Unfortunately, I think the ire of the opponents of charter government, it's a little misdirected. Today's discussion is not about having a charter or starting charter government, it's about naming a charter committee. And if you do vote to name a charter writing committee, they will write the charter, and that's what the citizens will vote on. I just ask that the decision be made by the citizens of Carroll County, not by necessarily the five of you or a handful of activists here in the audience today. Please, let the citizens decide. Thank you.
And next is Ms. Johnston.
Commissioners, good morning. Good morning, good morning, and I thank you for allowing me to speak today. Number one, I'm very, very upset about even thinking of Carroll County going charter. I don't understand the reason. I understand through my analysis that I believe it was brought up four times, four times Carroll County voted it down. I don't know who brought it up again or what was the reason, but I had been to other prior meetings, and I understand from gentlemen, and I know we have to compare other counties because our taxes will go up. Number one, when I talked to somebody from Frederick, no names mentioned, their budget at one time was $525 million. We got a charter, it went up to $611 million. We've got to be real here, we have to stay focused. Grass is not always green on the other side. What purpose someone came up to devise charter again is beyond my wildest dreams. Our organization here in Carroll County, where my office is located, we're absolutely adamant about charter. So, I want you to decide truthfully to stay away from charter, think about the citizens of Carroll County, what good it does for them, not charter. Number one, I thought about having an ordinance. After we decide today, or when you decide about having a charter, decide to kill it altogether and never back up in Carroll County again. We need to have an ordinance to say, "We're done with charter, what reason it is, so we need pro and con on it." Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's all the cards I have, though. I see one. Do you want to? Okay. Do you want to sit down? Do you want to sit down? That'd be easier for you? You don't mind, do you?
I think, no, I think, I think Mr. Dell has heard that respect.
It's like old times.
Welcome back.
Well, I'm not going to take a lot of time. I guess you probably knew that I am opposed to charter government. And when I was Commissioner, we had a lot of discussions and one day I was at work before. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Move up a little bit, Mr. Dell, if you will. There you go.
I was looking for some information about forestry ordinance, and I went under the offices, and on the wall, there was three racks, and it had three forestry ordinance in there. And so, I thought we need to clean these things up. At that time, we had 160 ordinances, and the commissioners decided to hire a firm from New York to look at all this mess, and they had an office in Calhoun. So, we did that, and I think they worked from August till October to develop a codebook. Don't bring mine, it's so heavy. Is that still in use?
Yes, it's online. Yes, Commissioner, it's online now also, so you don't have to carry it around anymore.
So, when we got done with this, we had 32 ordinances, and I think that was a big step to simplify... And I think that was a big step to simplify. You almost had to go to the attorneys to make a decision because of the confusion of so many ordinances. And I think to go to charter government would just open the book up for all kinds of reasons. It'd be a big prolonged process, and what we've had at the national level is a disgrace. We don't need that kind of thing here in Carroll County. And I believe that any government is only as good as the people you elect through it. So I think my personal preference would be three commissioners from the rest of districts who did that at large. I think you fellows have heard all of the comments. You don't need a lot more to put on your mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
By the way, it's always an honor to have someone who's sat in these seats before to address us. So, thank you very much, sir. Okay, is that all you have?
That's all.
Okay. Katie, Berry, our director of the Board of Elections. And Tim, you going to change seats? Keep Katie company. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
You're not pushing her out of the way, are you?
There we go. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm afraid a lot of what I'm going to say will sound redundant to you if you read the excellent article in the Carroll County Times this morning. They covered much of the ground. I'm going to cover unfortunately, so.
So now you're going to take his picture, and he's going to be on the front page. Wow.
Today, I'm going to talk about the commissioner-initiated charter process. There are two processes. One of them is citizen-generated. Today, I'm going to focus only on the commissioner-initiated charter process because that's where, if you're headed anywhere, that's the way you were headed. And we're going to assume, let's assume that the commissioners do pass a resolution saying, "Let's create a charter board." The next step is to appoint five, seven, or nine members of this charter board to write the charter. And it's interesting that the qualifications of the board are very limited. You need to be a registered voter, period. There's no quota for party members, party affiliation. There's nothing about representatives have to be from a certain district or a certain number of representatives from each district. That's all they have to be is party, is a registered voter in Carroll County to be appointed, to be qualified to be appointed. So that brings the question, what type of person gets appointed? Well, that's up to you. The philosophy, the type of person who's going to serve on this charter board is entirely up to the Board of County Commissioners. So it's very critical that you think that through as to who would be appointed to the county commissioners. And I say that because once the county commissioners appoint the charter board, you have essentially turned the keys over to the charter board to draft the charter. Your role is extremely limited. The thinking is that you've appointed a citizens' board to create a charter on behalf of the citizens of Carroll County. This is in no way a county commissioner board. So you don't get to dictate or instruct or anything to this charter board. They are completely on their own. They will report back to you with a proposed charter, and at that point, it goes to the voters. Now, once the board is appointed, they have eighteen, up to eighteen months to draft the charter. Again, they don't need to take the full eighteen, but they have up to eighteen months. Now, there's a big caveat to the eighteen months. There is a process where if you appoint, let's say, five, seven, to nine members, a petition can be generated by citizens. And if they obtain the signatures of 2,000 registered voters, the entire membership of the charter board will be the subject of a referendum or a special election to be held within 30 to 90 days upon receipt of the petition by the elections board. And Katie's going to get into a lot of that. The referendum will include proposed nominees from the citizens, and they'll be running, essentially running against your nominees during this special election. Once the special election, if that's the way it goes, or whatever you want to call it, this referendum is held and the members are confirmed, at that point, the eighteen months starts clicking for the charter board. Any questions? So, this is a good time to segue into the nuts and bolts from the electoral process to how a charter government would work as far as the elections board goes.
So, good morning, Commissioners. If you don't mind, at first, I would like to take a second to acknowledge Patty Whitson and Scott Moser. They played critical roles in helping us to expand our warehouse. Scott Moser did several years ago. We needed more space, and he worked with us tirelessly to get us what we needed. And Patty Whitson played a large role in implementing early voting in 2010 because we had early voting at the senior center. And she has been welcoming us with open arms for several years, and I really enjoyed working with them. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to say that as well. So, this morning, I am providing you with some historical information and other relevant information as you guys go on with making this decision. I've put out some statistics and the most, three most recent types of decisions that the voters had made about charter government. In 1992, there was a question on the presidential primary ballot about whether voters were for or against the proposed home charter as written by the board. You'll notice that there was an 87% turnout for this election. It was a presidential primary, so very large turnout. And you'll see that the result was 30,000 against, 18,004 out of, you know, approximately 50,000 votes. So then, in 1998, there was a special election held on a Saturday. Special elections are considered a traditional election, but they are held at a special cost at a special time. And traditionally, historically, we see a lot lower of a turnout than we would with a presidential or gubernatorial election. So in this election, there was a 37% turnout, and you can see the result was, there were more voters against the charter than for. There was an unplanned cost in the budget of $105,000, and that was, of course, in 1998. Then in 2006, we had a question on the ballot about code home rule. Now, that was different than charter government. Code home rule runs completely, just in a completely different fashion. So again, this was a 62% turnout because it was a gubernatorial general election. It was also voted down. And so currently, we have about 123,000 active eligible voters that would be eligible for a special election or part of a primary or general election. So there's a lot of unknowns when we talk about charter government, when we talk about special elections, and when we talk about the Constitution and dates that are in the Constitution. We can't control human behavior. There are timelines within the Maryland Constitution. Basically, if one thing occurs, then something else has to occur a certain amount of time after that. So it's really hard to give you hard-clad timelines because it's really dependent upon when the commissioners make a decision, or if there is a petition that is brought to the Board of Elections to petition to initiate the charter. So what I'm doing today is basically giving you some theoretical examples. Everyone should probably be familiar with this chart. Where I have the red stars indicated is where there is an impact with the Board of Elections' office. If county voters would initiate by petition a charter board as opposed to the county commissioners, they have six months to gather 10,000 signatures. So the unknown here is, depending on when that six months starts, will it occur, will we at the Board of Elections get the petition when we're in the midst of running an election? And then we have a lot of deadlines and things. So with that, there's, of course, an unknown cost of how much it would be to process it. And of course, we would do it. It's just making you aware. The next point that we would be involved is if the commissioners or the voters move forward to create a charter board. And as Mr. Burke said, there is a 60-day window after the vote to move to a charter board, that we could have a petition of 2,000 signatures come to the Board of Elections. We would have 20 days to process it. And then dependent upon when that is delivered to the Board of Elections, we could have to have a special election 30 to 90 days out from getting the petition gathered. And then the final place that we would be impacted would be having the charter was written, it is delivered to the commissioners, to the Board of Elections, and then we would place the question on the ballot as to whether or not voters are in favor of the written charter as it's being proposed or not. So, as I said, I'm giving you some examples of timelines. Okay? So option one is a perfect scenario. We would say that you all would decide to move to establishing a charter writing board by September 1st. Ideally, you want to give up to 18 months to write the charter. I believe in Frederick, they were the last ones to do this. It did take all but the 18 months to write it. We are currently sitting at 12 months. The deadline for making it onto the presidential ballot in November of '20 is July 27th of next year. Okay? But if there was no, there were no contested petitions or anything like that, that's your perfect scenario. You establish the board now, they write it in 12 months, and it gets delivered to the Board of Elections, and it goes on the presidential general election ballot. So, option two is a special election. If we stick to the September 1st date that you decide to establish a charter writing board, of course, there's 18 months to complete it, but we, on October 30th, would be the deadline for us to get a petition of 2,000 signatures countering the people that you have selected for the board. We have 20 days to verify the signatures by November 19th. Ideally, we always hope that there's more than 2,000 signatures because there are going to be people that are in that 2,000 that don't meet all of the requirements for petition signatures. I can also tell you historically in Frederick, I'll say again, in Frederick, they did not have enough signatures, and then they were in litigation for a period of time. So if we have at least 2,000 signatures, they're accepted and verified, the Maryland Constitution says that we have to hold an election 30 to 90 days out from this state in November. Now, the caveat, there's a couple of caveats to this, and I did reach out to the Attorney General's Office, the State Board of Elections Assistant Attorney General, for advice because of how close this is coming to the April presidential primary. And there is no real wiggle room, if you will, to just hold it off until the April primary. We would have to have a special election. And with the type of voting equipment we have now in the process, there's logistically no way we could have a special election in 30 days. It would be more close to the 90-day in February, when we are doing a lot of other things, as you might imagine. So, as I said, the PAC is not successful. There's always a risk of litigation. And then the failure at the end of that process to deliver the charter by July 27th could result in another special election in 2021. Okay? So it depends on how the petition rolls out and all of that. Option three, this option actually would hold off a potential special election if we were to get a petition. So if you all would wait to make your decision in November, the timeline that I just talked about in option two would fall into place to put the proposed charter writing board members based off of the 2,000 petition success onto the primary election ballot. So we would avoid a special election that time around. However, if the board, the charter writing board, as Mr. Burke said, if the charter writing board changes in any capacity because of the election, that 18 months starts over again, so we still run the risk of a special election in '21. So it's really, the timing is up to you all to determine how this all falls into place. So petitions in general, as I've already stated most of this, there's a risk of having petitions, a petition given to the Board of Elections during the presidential election cycle, you know, that risks of unfunded monies that might have to occur for us to be able to do everything we need to do. And then as far as the gathering of 2,000 signatures, and I bring this up because if it occurs, your people that you have selected for the board have to know that they have to go through the process of filing as a candidate, like you all do when you run for commissioner. They have to have a statement of organization gathered prior to getting their signatures within the 60th day of getting the petition at the Board of Elections. Then all people from your group and then the people in the petition group have to file a certificate of candidacy, statement, or financial disclosure, have a filing fee, and have it all there so that all of their names can appear on a ballot. Okay? Now, special elections. This is a for-year information because, as you see in the lower right-hand corner, the commissioners are the ones who decide when a special election occurs and what kind of special election could occur. There was a piece of legislation that passed a few years ago that allows for a special election by mail. Has yet to be done. It's, I think, the first special election by mail, or not special election, but the first election by mail in Maryland is going to occur in Rockville in the fall. But I have listed out what is required of an in-person traditional election versus a special election. Cost is slightly less, as I'm projecting with a special election, but because we've never had one by mail, I'm not really sure. One thing that I would like to note about an in-person traditional election is polling place availability. As you know, we have polling places in schools. So if we have a special election during the week and the schools are not closed, we run into a problem. If we reduce the amount of polling places we have and consolidate, voters run the risk of getting confused because, in theory, we're talking about a February special election two months before an April primary. So there's a lot of risks with that. And then the other point that I will make is with election judges. All of our election judges would have to become county employees because they will be making over a certain amount of money. So that is a huge impact to human resources and payroll here in the county. So they are the two decisions that you would make if we ended up going down that path.
Is there early voting in a special election?
No.
Not just one day?
But what I will say is there's absentee voting, and then in-person elections would have provisional voting as well. Okay. So as we keep reiterating, the outcome of a special election, if you have a petition and it is not successful for the 2,000 signatures, your original charter writing board continues on writing the charter, everything is fine. If petition, if the petition has nominating folks and we have a special election or an election with the primary or the general, there could be a combination of appointees. The original appointees could win, or the whole brand-new set could win, and that 18 months starts over again. So as I said, the deadline to inform the Board of Elections that there is a charter that we are going to vote on as citizens is July 27th of 2020. And if it is not given to me by then, depending on the timeline after that, we could have to have a special election in '21. Or it could, it may not appear until the '22 ballot, which would push back the implementation of the charter potentially to 2026 because of how the election cycles are. So with that being said, I would just like to reiterate, if everyone, if you have questions, please send them to me in an email so that I can have everything in writing, get back to everybody. It's a lot of information to gather, and, you know, every day, we learn something new in this process. in this process, it seems. So, with that, I will take questions from all of you.
Is there a guideline for the appointment process of the members? Is it done transparent? I guess it'd be a legal question to Mr. Burke.
There's nothing in the in the state law or constitution regarding qualifications except that they need to be registered voters.
I mean, like if we proceed it and want to go forward with appointing that committee, do we do that in open session? I think one of the keys to prevent a special election is have total transparency in the appointment of those committee members. Is there any guidelines on that? Is it subject to Open Meetings Acts?
That's, that's a good question. You'd be discussing, I assume, qualifications of individuals that you want to appoint to a board. Typically, that's not done in an open session because you may say things about potential appointees that they don't want on television.
Couldn't there be a combination of closed and open session in that process?
Yes.
To keep citizens?
That could be whatever, whatever you want generally.
And I know I I've provided to all of you in your packets some information on registered voters, the breakdown of, you know, by by gender and all of that to help with that decision process to make things, I guess, more equal, balanced across the county, that kind of thing. And of course, we can offer any other support as far as the balance factor of registered voters for for all of you.
I notice there's a substantially large, more voters registered now than the last time this was on the ballot?
Yes.
Almost double?
There were eighty thousand, almost eighty thousand voters in the special election, so we are at almost one hundred and twenty-four thousand right now.
That's a substantial change.
All right, any other questions for Katie or Tim?
Appreciate your time.
Sure, thank you.
Good information, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would like a motion that this board appoint a nine-member charter writing commission to proceed forth with writing a charter for the county.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, the motion fails. Any other discussion on this?
Well, I would like to make a motion that we take this up. I think the timeline, in my opinion, is too compact in order to get this done, to get it done properly before the election coming up. And I am in no way favor of spending taxpayer money on a special election. I think that would be ridiculous. I would like to maybe, I'll make a motion to table this for twelve months and then bring it up again at that time where we have a better timeline before the president, for the gubernatorial election that would be coming up. I think things would be laid out a little bit better that way, and we have time to run through this and look at it. That'd be my motion, we table this for twelve months.
And what you're saying though is not tabling for twelve months to stand up a committee, you're tabling the discussion for twelve months for us to come back to convene and have a discussion on the forms of government, whether we would want to stand up a committee at that time or not.
Yes, right. I just think it would be a better timeline in order to get it out that way. I think we need more time than the time before this next election to to decide this, I really do.
You know, we have a committee, I think, kind of already set up with a long-term planning council that is out here.
You're talking about LTAC?
LTAC, yeah. I wasn't going to use acronyms here.
Well.
Just explained it, the Long-Term Planning Council, that, you know, is planning long-term for Carroll County. And what is the catalyst for bringing up charter? Is it population? Is it budget? Is it, is it unable to manage certain things in government? And this is, their original charge was to look at the county in long-range form, and, you know, we have it in place, why not let them come back with, do some research on all of this and come back with, review that code book that Commissioner Dell referred to and start to look at this and come back with a report on it?
I mean, they could still do that regardless of my motion. I mean, that's not a bad idea to have them do that, but it really is kind of outside the parameter of my motion is to look at this again in twelve months. Because I just don't want it to die because nothing's going to happen today.
Okay. Is there a second to Commissioner Frazier's motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Discussion.
So, I think part of that discussion is processes, things that we can do in the meantime, like charging LTAC with, you know, looking into this.
Coming back with recommendations.
Sure. And and then that's, that's part of our normal process, procedures in discussing with LTAC. These are activities we want them to take a look at, and I think that's, that could be of great value. So, I I agree, we should not let things just die on the vine at this point, but at this point, you know, tabling any further discussion from us on forms of government, I think for twelve months is a prudent measure.
Okay. Yeah, my, my only concern is the the amount of time. You know, something of this magnitude that's going to affect all of us in the county, you know, we've got, we've got to get nine good people together. That's going to be tough in itself. I would suggest that, you know, just randomly picking nine people probably wouldn't be the best method. You know, we've talked about interviewing folks for prominent positions in some of our, our boards and commissions. I mean, we might even have to go that step, but even with that being said, we've heard it takes up to eighteen months. I I'd like to think that, man, they, they would have to have that amount of time in order to make reasonable decisions for us to be able to move forward, and we're just not there right now. And I, I will not entertain a change in, of this magnitude that doesn't allow for the maximum amount of time. This is too huge. So, that's, that's kind of where I am. And no disrespect to you, Commissioner Boucher. I know this is something that that you feel passionate about, and I appreciate those things in which all of my colleagues feel passionate about. But I, I will tell you, and I really haven't gotten into a whole lot of banter about this, in the four years and a half that I've been in this seat, and I've, all of us are out and about, and I'm out and about a lot, I've never heard it come up, except on an occasion when someone says, well, what do you think about it? There hasn't been a push by anybody until you brought it up. So, so that's troubling and challenging for me as well. So, I think we have got to allow, and I don't want to keep pushing, 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 but we have got to allow the right amount of time because of the magnitude of this decision.
I thoroughly agree, Commissioner. I was wondering if there's any way possible if the people who want to be on that commissioner, that charter writing commission could be on the ballot in one of the upcoming elections? Could we just go directly to having an election for people to file to potentially be candidates for that commission? Just go straight to an election of the people for those commission members?
Okay, well, that, okay, that's another question. I don't, and I don't, I don't think that would be allowed.
I'm going to say no, I think step one is you would have to take the.
Right, you got to make the decision first and then take that step. So, I kind of get where you're going, but, you know.
Try to alleviate some of the potential problems in the future.
Right, right. So, that's where I am. I don't, is there, I've got a motion and second on the floor right now, so.
Let's just add a little bit more discussion for a moment, and that is an appreciation for the insight that our community has provided, the, the comments at large for the, you know, that that were made. Murray, a shout out to you and your team for the analysis done on the pros and cons and what you share with us and the openness that you share with us. I do believe it is a nonpartisan decision that needs to be made. You know, but with all of that said, that lends me to be guarded on, as Commissioner Wance shared, making a decision that would cause us to be in a very tight timeline for the next election cycle, whereas if we table this, as I second into Commissioner Frazier's motion, it gives us that time to do it the right way, so.
You have a timeframe in your motion, right?
Table it for twelve months.
Table it for twelve months, but I get, I guess my point would be, that doesn't mean the conversation has to stop.
No.
We can continue to talk about it and perhaps, you know, get some input. It's just not, okay, everything stops and we're not going to talk about it until July twenty-sixth next year. We, we can continue to get input, and I'm sure citizens will continue to weigh on it, but this just holds the line here because I, it just, the timing's off.
You have very valid points. I like that ultimately, the concept of this is us relinquishing air control over it and turning it over to the citizens, because ultimately, this is about empowering the citizens. If and when this charter writing commission would come about, that that charter writing commission would have open meeting requirements to fulfill, and that citizens would participate in that process and weigh in on the language. I thoroughly agree with a lot of the concerns that my constituency and my fellow colleagues' constituency have brought up about this issue, but it would be in the process of us relinquishing air control over to the citizens for them to participate in the process and ultimately write what I call the Carroll County Local Constitution. And finally, if that constitution is written, it is ultimately up to the citizens to vote at the ballot to determine it. We would have no control over that. So, basically, we would be relinquishing air control over to the people, and I'm all about empowering the people. And if the citizens do not like the ultimate product of that commission, then they should vote it down. But if it's a very good piece of potential legislation, local constitution, then I'm sure that I have faith in the citizens to move forward and approve that. But ultimately, it would be the decision of the citizens, not the decision of this board. And I appreciate everything my colleagues have contributed in today's discussion, and I think it is a wise decision, and I look forward to eventually discussing this with my constituents and ultimately some of my colleagues, so that ultimately, we make a decision that is best for the citizens of Carroll County.
All right, with that being said, any further discussion? I've got a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. All right, so that's four to one, and we'll table that until, for twelve months. All right? Okay, thank you. All right, second on our agenda today is a bid approval for Bear Branch Nature Center roof replacement. I would ask, as you're exiting, please, if you have some conversation, do it outside so we can keep moving. Thank you. Okay, good morning.
Good morning. We are here to request your approval to award a contract for the Bear Branch Nature Center roof replacement, the Garland DBS, in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The Garland roof is our sole source roof. We have it on most of the county buildings where we can. What we do is we go out and we get quotes from, or bids from authorized Garland installers. So, in this case, the company doing the work is going to be Boone and Crockett. They were the lowest bidder in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but the contract is actually going to go to Garland DBS.
What kind of roof is going to be installed?
Metal roof, standing steam.
Yay.
Have we used them before?
Absolutely. Yeah, every roof that we've replaced within facilities in the county, we try to go with the metal standing steam Garland roofing certified, thirty-year warranty. They're really responsive on their actions for repairs, if there is any. And they come out and they study the roofs for us, and they, they do a fabulous job in what they do.
There's a thirty-year warranty, what's expected life of the roof? It's much longer than that, isn't it?
Your metal should be, you would think, fifty, sixty years.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But they will stand behind that for thirty years.
Metal roof is the best option. I personally put a metal roof on my house because I studied it, and we'll get the most longevity out of a metal roof. Might cost a little more initially, but it's worth the investment.
In thirty years, remind me, I'll come pick you up and we'll walk. Okay, old buddy? Well, you can ride your bike and I'll walk behind you, okay? Thirty years.
Probably got about same piece of.
Okay, any other questions on this?
I'll make the motion that the Board of Commissioners award the contract for Bear Branch Nature Center roof replacement to Garland DBS Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, what's timeline on that, by the way, Justin, wait?
Uh, they're, yeah, they're going to start in fall time.
Okay. Beautiful, okay. Is that going to interrupt any activity out there, Jeff?
No, we will be past our summer camps and we'll be able to work around it with programming.
Good, okay, thank you.
See you this evening.
All right. Yeah, yeah, you got your walk tonight. How many do you have? Never mind. Next on our agenda is resolution declaring county's official intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds. Our comptroller, Mr. Burke.
This sounds exciting.
Yeah, not, not too exciting. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Joined by Jennifer Hobbs, the Bureau Chief of Accounting.
Hi, Jennifer.
This morning, and before the board with an item that we do at this time each year for the new members of the board, as you concluded your budget process and adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty budget, included in that budget was twenty-eight million seventy-four thousand three hundred and thirty dollars of projected bond funding on projects where debt will be used ultimately. This step that we take at this point each year is to declare our official intent that we would intend to expend the funds first and issue the debt after we've already expended. So, what that does is retain some flexibility for us as opposed to issuing the debt before spending and incurring, A, incurring interest in borrowing costs, and B, holding on to funds that then might take away some flexibility if the board would change course and decide not to proceed on a project, let's say. So, the most flexibility retains with us when we do this official intent and expend dollars first, some dollars we have on hand, and then reimburse. So, an average bond sale for us is about twenty-five to thirty million dollars per year, and of that, we're usually doing reimbursement of fifteen or eighteen million or so. So, this really is a compliance with IRS regulations for tax-exempt bond issue. In order to be able to do reimbursement with tax-exempt bonds, you need to have declared your intent to do that prior to, so you can't pick after the fact, you can't spend dollars on capital, and then after the fact say, oh, why don't we do, do debt on that instead of paying cash? So, you've got to declare that intent upfront. Is there any questions? Was that clear? I know it's a, it's a, it's a strange concept, so this represents all the, the exact amount of dollars of bonds included in the fiscal year twenty budget. And we've done this every year, so all of our outstanding projects with all of the outstanding debt that, projected funding that exists have received this intent, and that's, that really maintains for us the, the most flexibility. So, this is not an obligation to issue any future debt. This doesn't incur any debt, any cost. There's no downside to putting this intent on all of our outstanding debt. It really doesn't, there's no downside to it. It's just not doing it could restrict us from doing it later.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners to approve the resolution declaring the county's official intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds.
Second.
Okay, any other questions on this procedure? Especially for you guys.
Yes, and the only question that I have is, is this at all reflective on our bond rating? And is there like any cause and effect to now having a triple-A bond rating to where we're at today and for the future?
Right. I would say no, I don't think this plays any role in our rating. Again, the budget process determined how much debt we will take on in the future. That is more of a financial impact. When we award projects, spend dollars, and then need to go back and, and do, and do the issue, how much debt we take on, that affects it. This is really just an administrative step to comply with IRS rules.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate. Well, I appreciate Mr. Burke without the E, explaining this, because I must profess that when I originally read this, I was a little bit confused as to how it works this way. So thank you.
Okay. Anytime.
All right, any other questions? Got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I'll leave that for your signature.
Okay. Second for you folks is a loan request from the Hampstead Volunteer Fire Department for one of our low-interest loans that we provide to our fire companies. So Mr. Burke, again, and I know there's some folks here from Hampstead.
There are.
I'm not going to let you go without talking, so hang on.
So I don't believe I've been before the board for a bit with a fire company loan request. The county has for years, more than 25 years that I'm aware of, offered to the volunteer fire companies in the county the opportunity, if it's to their advantage, to use the county's financing program in order to borrow for their own needs, primarily capital, so either building, construction and renovation, or in this case, equipment. So some of the fire companies use other methods. I think there's some state programs and others. Quite a few use us. It really is, comes down to whether or not that's in their best interest. To us, it's essentially a pass-through. So if this proceeds, we would work with Hampstead. When they purchased the fire equipment, we would forward the funds for the invoice to purchase the equipment and include up to 700,000 in our next bond issue to reimburse the county with bond dollars. So it's a pass-through debt borrowing program. We pass through the interest rate as well, so the rate that we'll receive in our next bond issue will be the rate that Hampstead would repay the county at over a term. The term on this loan would be probably about 10 to 12 years. We'll go up to 20 on buildings generally, but equipment, we like to keep closer to 10. So what I'm asking for the board's approval, and certainly you can speak with the fire company about the need and the equipment that they're looking at, but then we'll be looking to receive the board's approval to accept the loan and be able to work with the Hampstead Fire Company. And then also, again, when we do this program, we're taking on some future debt possibility, and we would do the same resolution we just did for our planned funding. This is sort of outside our planned funding in order to forward them the funds first, go ahead and purchase the fire equipment, and then include this in the next upcoming bond issue.
This in no way restricts the county in any projects or anything we have coming up. We have all the funding in place that we need for anything like that.
Correct. This does not reflect on the county's planned funding, so it does not reflect on our ability to have debt service and so forth. So when we issued these, it will go into our debt service, but we will also be receiving repayments from the fire companies. Hampstead does not have any loans outstanding with the county currently. In general, across this whole program, to my knowledge, we've never had any issues with repayment or any problems. They really know what they're able to take on when they take on a piece of equipment like this. They've already gone through that financial planning of their own. This just helps them save dollars with financing costs.
Yeah, and you answered the second question about whether they had debt already, and I appreciate that. Can this approach be tied to a bond bill from the state? Can this be a matching effort to a bond bill? Because it is a capital project, so why can't we go after something like that using the delegation? Is it, or is it really apples to bananas and not apples to apples? Do you know?
Well, I'm not real knowledgeable in the state's bond bill process. When the state uses the term "bond bill," generally in my experience, that means they're borrowing in order to grant dollars to capital projects. I don't know whether this would or wouldn't qualify for that. If so, I would think that the fire companies would be pursuing any opportunities they have. There is some dedicated state money toward fire services across the state. William Amos 508 Funds is, it's called, and the county administers a program where we receive that and allocate it to the various fire companies. So some of the dollars are coming through a state grant program, and that's probably some of the dollars they may use to be able to repay us for these loans. That's the program I'm aware, most aware of.
Go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah, so having a wee bit of knowledge about this, I can tell you that the timing is usually off, because when the state requests, or someone requests some money from the state with a bond issue, you know, the not-knowing part of it is the most crucial part of this. And when these fire companies are ready to replace an engine, and certainly there's a need, when you have, when you're replacing something that's 1995, the need was probably a year or so ago. So they're making sure that they're keeping that on the road, which is costing them money too. But the not-knowing part of it is tough. You know, you ask for it, well, we'll let you know in May. Okay. These guys need to roll with it and get, you know, get it in the loop so that they can begin to have it manufactured, and so there is a lot of state money. The Maryland State Fireman's Association, and I know my particular fire company has borrowed money from their low-interest loans as well. So this is something that the county really doesn't have to do, but afforded this opportunity to all of our fire companies years ago as more of a respect type of thing, that, hey, we'll help you out with this. So I think it's better suited for us to be able to do it so that they have a clear-cut, okay, off we go, because we need a fire engine.
And I agree, and I think, you know, and I'm in favor of doing this, but it also could be a, you know, second course of action with the first looking at, and maybe just we can have the conversation with the delegation in later in August on, again, bond bills and these type of efforts. If it's mute, then we just put it to the side, but if it's something that they can potentially take up, you know, I think we should have that conversation. I'm looking at you, but I'm really having the conversation with us. That we take it up with the delegation on the best use of bond bills, and this comes across our plate, so.
How long's it take to get an engine? I mean, you don't go in the lot and buy one.
No, it takes months. I know we have someone here from Hampstead, so if you'd stand up, sir, and introduce yourself. I mean, I know who you are, but no one else.
My name is Rich Zykowski. I'm the president of Hampstead Fire Company. For this particular engine, it's 280 days from when we signed the contract.
Hey, Rich, what's a Capital Pumper? Is that just a brand?
Yeah.
Yeah, Lou, you got that one? Because I've never seen a Capital.
I'm Lou Stoms and part of Hampstead Fire Company. The Capital Pumper is a description Seagrave's used as a pumper that was done down in DC area and stuff, and it's a model set they did. And we actually, if you, Steve's from Area 23, the one we're replacing in 95, we've actually shortened it up 10 inches and compacted some equipment and stuff to work in the tighter environment that we have in Roberts Fields and those places to work with, and we actually helped take some cost out of it, because, you know, $700,000, I remember when we spent, I think we spent $300,000 for 23 back in that time in 95, and that engine is still first-line serviceable right now. But I mean, you start losing your insurance ratings and stuff as, stuff gets older, and we've got, what, 24 is a 2004 or '05, the ladder trucks 2004 or '05. So we've got to get an engine replacement in now so that we can have that paid for when the next engine's due to be replaced. So it's kind of like we're trying to time this stuff along and put that together. But the Capital Spec, that's just a term more for a model than it is anything else.
Yeah, I just never heard of it before, Lou, but that makes sense. It's patterned after the ones in DC.
Yeah, see, we lowered compartments on the right side to bring the ladders down so that we can handle them off the engine easier.
Yeah, I haven't been able to reach them for years.
The pump panel was compacted. There are a lot of things that were all compacted to work in our environment, because as we've tightened to North Cal Farms and different places, the developments are tightened up a lot, and our larger engine, like our Engine Tanker 24, is a little hard to get around in some of those environments. And, you know, so we started looking back and saying, what can we do without? How can we work, and what's the future going to be? So that's what was put together.
I'm in favor of this. I just wonder if we can approve it and then even then apply for a state bond, which is essentially a grant that would cut, you know, whatever they gave us off of this.
Steve, can I say one more?
Yeah.
What we need approval for, and it's something that you maybe need to know, and I don't know if Rich and I made it where, Seagrave's gave us a month's extension on when they were going to have a price rise. And I mean, it was probably going to cost us 40, 50,000 more dollars, and we got to the end of the month. And we need your security that that would do it. If at a later time, some better interest thing comes along, we're not opposed to working with you, long as we know we have the funds so we can sign a contract and say, go. We were told, I think, not to sign a contract until such times we had approval from you. And I think everybody in Hampstead, and I may be speaking a little out of turn, Rich, you can correct me if you need to, but we're willing to do whatever is necessary to be as conservative as we can, because this is a funding source for us to be efficient, and we do like to spend the funds wisely.
Thanks, Lou.
I think.
Yep, that's good. Yeah, typically, I know some of the fire companies, I can't remember if we did, but we've gone after some building, construction, bond money, but I don't know that we've ever asked about specific pieces of equipment.
There's always a first.
Well, yeah, I mean, we could have that conversation.
With the delegation.
Yeah, but in this instance, I think we need to roll so that they can get their price.
Yeah, absolutely.
And keep in mind, if it's appropriate, a purchase of these types or appropriately funded by bond bills, the entities themselves can ask the delegation. They don't have to come through us. So unlike other kinds of things where they funnel the money through us, that's not what...
Which is what typically happens. They'll buy, I mean, I know a couple of fire companies have bypassed for HVAC, complete HVAC system installations or replacements in fire stations. So I know that they've done that before, too, so, anyway.
Okay, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the loan request of 700,000 by the Hampstead Volunteer Fire Engine and Hose Company and adopt a resolution declaring the county's intent to reimburse expenditures with debt service proceeds.
Second.
Any other questions? Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you, guys.
Okay, I'll leave them.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Good luck. Hey, Jen, sweet corn in yet?
It is.
Okay.
Just came in.
Okay, I figured. It's completely off-popping, but just...
It's okay.
All right, 2020 health and dental insurance employee rates. Kim Froch, who is, what do you do again, Kim?
Director of HR.
Good morning.
I think it's still morning, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it is, we're still morning.
Yes, it is, okay. See, I told you it'd still work.
All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Kim Froch, Director, Human Resources. Robin Hooper, HR Manager. We're here today to present the calendar year 2020 employee contribution rates for health and dental benefits. To bring everybody up to date, for three of you, this is going to be a repeat, for two of you, it's going to be new, because it's your first time going through this. We are self-insured for our health and dental benefits. This means that the county does not pay premiums to an insurance company. We pay fixed costs, which are administrative fees and stop-loss premiums, and the variable costs, which are the actual claims to our third-party administrator. For medical, it's United Healthcare; for dental, it's Delta Dental. Our stop-loss coverage is maintained at $300,000 per individual per year, so if any individual goes over that 300,000, then the insurance company picks up the costs from there. And again, while we maintain the risk for our claims, we found that that's better for us, and most jurisdictions are self-funded. And the example of that is if our third-party administrator anticipates $20 million worth of costs, and it's really only 18 million, in a fully insured arrangement, they keep that 2 million, and the self-insured, we keep it. So if we spend less, we get to keep our money. We are also responsible for establishing the contributions for employees. We utilize the costs projected by our third-party administrators, as well as analyzing our actual claims experience to produce the next year's rates. So our costs for 2020 are based on projected medical and prescription claims after doing that analysis, plus our administrative fee and the stop-loss. This year, we did have an increase in administration and stop-loss fees. So costs continue to go up, but as you see medical inflation, it continues to go up. There is good news. Employees have utilized in-network facilities and physicians for 98.9% of anything that they do on our benefits. We are ahead of United Healthcare's book of business, so we are their front-runner, so to speak, and that has saved us cost avoidance in excess of $10.4 million over the last several years, each year. That's a 10.4. They're utilizing generic medications 84.2% of the time. We're a little behind the book of business on that, but we're catching up. So based on our analysis, we present you the rates and hold on to your hats, because I know all the employees are watching and they're excited to hear this. It's a very small increase, from 27 cents to 74 cents for Air Choice Plan per pay, which comes out to $7 to $19 a paycheck or a year for employees. And then the Choice Plus Plan, excuse me, which is the more expensive plan, it's 43 cents to $1.19 per paycheck, or $11.18 to $30.94 a year increase. Obviously, we're not treading on the raises we just gave, so we're not taking it all back for insurance premiums. So for the dental, again, very small increase. They actually increased their administrative costs, which have not changed since 2013. And when we increased our yearly allotment to 1,500, that has increased some costs. We also allow the children to stay on until the end of the year they're 26. So that's our increase in claims, slight increase in claims we've seen. Again, employees are using network providers 80% of the time, which saves them money, and it saves us money. I'll let you go with your next one.
As part of our next step is open enrollment. Packets will be sent out October 4th, and will actually begin open enrollment October 7th through November 19th. Our annual health fair will be October 23rd. We'll have three times that day at two different locations. The maintenance center, we'll have it at 7 to 9:00. Then we'll have one here, 12 to 2:00 in the county office building, room 003. And then 4 to 6:00, we will have an evening session in 003 for our retirees and families or dependents. And we will have flu shots at every single session for the health fair that day. There will be some other stuff, but more details to follow. So that is our next step, once you guys set the rates for us.
Okay, so with all that being said, we are recommending the rates, that you all look at the rates as presented. If you have any questions from us, again, with the support of the employees, that's what's helped us keep these costs down. We appreciate all their efforts, and thank you for doing everything you do for us.
Yeah, I think that's excellent. I know our procedures always, we let this sink in for a week or two or something? Is that typically how we do it, allowing for employee feedback or something?
I don't think anybody will be unhappy with this increase.
You really think that's necessary from a procedural standpoint? Why couldn't, I know it's not listed and open meetings, you know?
No, 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 that's not, that's your role, not their.
Because of the minimal amount of increase, why can't we just take care of this today instead of waiting a week? Question, you got, yeah?
I think it's a very good, valid point. I was curious, how many years has the county been self-employing like this? And potentially, how much?
Self-insured.
Self-insured, I'm sorry. How much potential capital has the county saved in doing this? I think this is wonderful.
We've been self-insured for my 16 years.
My 18 years.
Eighteen years, so it predates us. If Ted's still here.
Predates us.
But it's been a very long time. We're looking at longer and longer-term.
We point back to Ted.
Well, Deb, you've been here longer.
Commissioner, don't go down.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's been a long time.
I think it's a wonderful program, and I'm sure the employees are happy and satisfied.
It's a good story. So any other questions? Mr. Burke, will you entertain my?
I would like to wait the week, to be honest with you, to hear back from employees.
I would like to wait the week, to be honest with you, to hear back from employees. Yeah, I don't think there's going to be any negative, but I'd just like to wait the week, because that's what you've always done it. Just in case someone wants to say something, it just gives me the opportunity.
Okay, I would just suggest.
I mean, they can still bring those comments as well. So, I mean, we encourage them to bring those comments to us regardless when you make the decision. If they want to bring comments to us after that, too, we encourage that as well.
Understood, but once the decision's made, people can be reluctant to come have a conversation.
So, all right, I'll stand down, Commissioner Burke. I was going to back you up on this, but I just stood down, so now it's.
Never mind.
So next week, you can.
It's very good information. Thank you.
Any other questions for HR? Thank you.
See you next week.
All right, see you next week.
Just like to bring you back, that's all it is.
That's okay. You're already scheduled. It's fine.
Okay. FY20 Community Development Block Grant. Good morning. And while you're making your way up here, Christine, just, again, kudos to you guys for the farewell yesterday to Pat. It was very nicely done over there.
Thanks. Thank you. We're gonna, she's going to my mess.
The punch was pretty good, too.
Yeah.
There's that. So, whatever. Anyway, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joining me today is F.T. Burden, who is the Executive Director of Family and Children's Services, and Debbie Sanford from the Grants Department. Carroll County is, is considered a non-entitlement jurisdiction, and each year, for the past three years, maybe, or four, this is four, this might be four, we have been able to submit an application to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for a federal community development block grant under their homeless services, under a homeless services category. Family and Children's Services is requesting that the county apply on their behalf this year. As the applicant, the county, specifically Citizen Services, is responsible for their oversight of the project. We guarantee funds will be used for the purpose stated in the application, and guarantee that the facility will be used for the stated purpose for a period of up to twenty years. We will enter into a sub- recipient agreement with Family and Children's Services detailing all of the CDBG requirements. F.T. will talk a little bit about the project, but they are seeking funding for the construction of a two-story, ten thousand square foot addition at West End Place in Westminster to house the Family and Children's Services Family Support Center. So with that, I'll.
Great to be here. Good to see everybody again. So, as she said, we are in the process of moving forward with the Family Support Center, which will house our domestic and family violence shelter on the second level, and all of our ancillary programs, case management, and behavioral health, that are now scattered throughout the town and various locations. This move was made to create efficiency in our operating, to create more access for clients, and ease of access to the various programs that we offer. As you're probably aware, we are the only provider of domestic violence services here in the county, as well as medical adult daycare, which are services that are connected to this facility. So we've been really intentional about trying to create the most sustainable, cost-effective, and programmatically efficient program possible. We've been moving forward really successfully. I think the last time we were here, we were still negotiating with the city for the purchase of the building, and have completed that, have moved through the process of zoning overlay, and are at the point now of, of having our site plan approved and moving towards the permits. We've garnered quite a bit more additional funding from supporters. We're up to about two point two million dollars of the funds needed for the project. And hopefully, by the end of the month, with Weinberg coming tomorrow for a site visit, we'll have another one point four million dollars in hand for the project. And that will really position us well to move successfully through the CDBG process, which we've worked really closely with this office on ensuring that we do the best and most competitive application possible. So, you know, we really would appreciate your support in moving forward with this application.
Has the Weinberg Foundation, I apologize, has the Weinberg Foundation provided funds previously to, so you already have that relationship with them?
Yes, we do. Last year, we got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We became an outpatient mental health facility, and so they gave us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of operating to help with the ramp up of that. And in fact, on Monday, every other year, their employees are allowed to, to pick an organization that they'd like to give to, and the foundation will provide it. And their chief operating officer chose Family and Children's Services. She's a Carroll County resident. She heard about this project, and twenty, they'll be giving us twenty thousand dollars outside of this that the, that an employee selected. So I think they're very aware of our programs, very fond of the work that we do. One of the, their new priorities is funding projects in rural jurisdictions. They have not had any submissions that would help them meet that requirement as a part of their new mandate. They see this as one of those projects. So all of those things, I think, bode well in terms of successfully moving through their process.
And this is a great news story. You know, the partnership with somebody like the Weinberg and the community coming together, finding ways, so.
It is definitely likely to have the Weinberg name on the building at the amount that they're investing. So I don't know if there are other Weinberg buildings here, but there is likely soon to be another one.
Fantastic.
So, I kind of know a little bit.
Little bit.
Of the need here. I have, you know, wee bit of knowledge on this one also. Critically needed to move this forward as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Because you, you guys really need to.
That's right.
To get a better facility.
That's right. Our shelter now is in a temporary location. We had been using a building owned by Carroll County Hospital, and they began doing construction. They have allowed us to use another building, which isn't ideal, but has allowed us to continue to provide services uninterrupted. The timeline for this is aggressive. The idea is to have all of the funding in place by the end of this calendar year, begin construction at the end of December, and be moving into the building a year from, from that. So late fall of 2020. So yes, it's definitely a huge need, and we're trying to move forward quickly.
So again, great, great teamwork from everybody that's been involved. I'd like to make the motion. Board of Commissioners approve the development of the CDBG application and advertise the required public hearing.
A second.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good luck. BGE estimated cost for utility relocation over an un, over this infamous unnamed stream.
It's Weaver Creek.
I thought we were going to call it Weaver Run.
Well, he's ever here barking about Weaver something. I don't know.
He can't run.
The Weaver Stream?
Weaver Creek.
Weaver Creek? Is there a difference between a creek and a stream?
Well.
Only if it has your name on it or what.
I think, yeah, I think if you're going to do that, it ought to be Weaver Crick.
Crick. He's got a crick. Ain't no creek, it's a crick.
I have to say, I was up in Anarodik Mountains this past weekend. They had Weaverville. It was up there. Park Place in Nubska. But there was a Weaverville.
A Weaverville?
There was.
What's it, little shack with a tractor in front of it?
It's where they wobble but don't fall down.
Very small town, but.
Those are Weavers, not Weavers.
But honestly, I went back later to try and take a picture to show Commissioner Weaver the, and I couldn't find it again. Pretty small, but I couldn't find it the next time.
Okay.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
So we are here to discuss the funding for relocating Baltimore Gas and Electric Utilities that are associated with the replacement of Hollingsworth Road Bridge over the unnamed stream. The construction costs were approved in the FY19 budget, and we have been working on the design. And at about sixty, seventy percent completed design, we shared our plans with the utility companies to find out what their impacts would be. And Mr. Brown shared a photo with you, and the second one really shows you the, you know, these poles are pretty large, and they carry a lot of things on them. They crisscross right over top of the structure. And according to the High Voltage Line Act, equipment can't be within ten feet of any overhead wires. So they have to be moved, or else the contractor will not be able to get in to do the work that we're going to ask them to do. BGE did provide us with a cost estimate for the work, the materials, the labor, and it comes to one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. And we are asking for your approval to have purchase orders signed to begin this work.
What about the Verizon line?
Yeah, Verizon hasn't come back to us. They also, at the same time, were privy to the same drawings, and they're providing a cost. They have not done so yet. We're hoping that theirs won't be in the magnitude of BGE, simply because it doesn't appear that they have as much to move. And it is important for you to know that in past years, this cost would have probably been about twenty-five thousand dollars less. But due to changes in federal tax law, BGE nor Carroll County no longer gets a tax break, and that does equate to about twenty-five thousand dollars of increased cost that we're seeing here.
For this project.
For this particular project. So it's when they, it's when they move these, we get it. And we certainly, Debbie and I have reviewed a list that goes over everything, an itemized list that was provided in their estimate from BGE. So we have all that. It looks relatively good in all the other aspects, but certainly wanted to give you that visual, because when you look at that amount of wire that they have to move, relocate, and add poles, it's going to be a good deal of work.
It's a lot of electricity and transformers and everything else.
Yes, sir. And it's a, it's a dual-circuit thirty-four KV line, so it's, it's a pretty big line.
Hey, what's it mean here in our briefing paper that to research the prior rights and determine the costs are a hundred percent billable?
BGE always looks to see if they have easements for their utilities to be there. If they do, and we don't, and we have a project that requires them to move, then the county would have to pay for those relocation costs.
Okay.
So they have the right to be there. They say they were there before we needed to move, and therefore, we have to pay.
Okay.
And we essentially, in these days, after that tax act, are treated just like any other customer. If you'd go in on your private grounds, say, I need this moved, you would get the same estimate of cost, and just like we've done here today.
And this is all within the Baltimore City property associated with Liberty Reservoir.
Really? Well, then send them the bill. Want me to get Jack, want me to get Jack on the phone, or what?
That is a county road running through the reservoir property, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. It's a small road.
Yep.
It's a county road.
All right, any other questions on this? This isn't within the budget. It's already in there, right?
Yes.
You anticipated this, so, okay.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the estimated cost for BGE utility relocation in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and no cents.
Second.
Any other?
I just need to state that I'm abstained from the vote on this, and the fact that my business manufactures products that actually go on the utility poles for BG.
Okay. All right, got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Four and one abstention. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Burn Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. Karen's going to lead the charge, our grants analyst in the Department of Management and Budget. What'd you do with the state's attorney? Throw him under a desk somewhere or something?
I'm Elizabeth Ingram. I'm one of the prosecutors in the office.
Good morning.
You're in charge now.
Today, today, I guess. Don't tell him that.
He's watching.
I know.
We'll text him.
Oh, he's watching? Well, then you're in charge. Okay, so there's that.
So hello, Commissioners. As you just said, I'm here with Elizabeth Ingram from the State's Attorney's Office, and we are here to present the fiscal year 2020 BJAG application. In the application, the State's Attorney's Office is requesting ten thousand dollars to fund the production of two videos. The videos are part of the State's Attorney's Office's drug prevention efforts, and are aimed specifically towards the county's public middle and high school students. The State's Attorney's Office is not requesting any county dollars in this request, as is reflected in the briefing papers. And if you have any specific questions about the programs, Ms. Ingram is here to address those.
Questions? We obviously know the impact of presenting to our students.
Where do we see this video? Somewhere.
Don't believe the lie.
Don't believe the lie.
So we play Don't Believe the Lie for middle schoolers. We play Special Ops for high schoolers. And then we have Tips, which is Threats in Plain Sight, which we play for adults, typically parents of middle and high school students. You may have seen the video, I'm trying to think, portions of the video, we've played at other programs. So one of the videos for the Special Ops program, Beth Schmidt, is, it's her story, and you may have seen that video before. You probably have seen them.
It looked very good.
Yeah, we played them all over the place. So now, at this point, we're just trying to kind of update them. So we present, I'm the prosecutor who handles the drug court cases, so I also present before, for the middle school and high school students. And we're just kind of trying to update them, stay relevant, and make them apply more to kids now than they did three or four years ago when they were originally made.
Fantastic.
All right, any other questions?
I'd just like to state, I like the fact that we're focusing now on younger and younger students, and we're realizing that the impact of drugs is impacting them at an earlier age. And we're consciously aware of it, and programs like this are very helpful. So thank you.
I think that's the goal, is try to sort of fight it from the start. So, that's where we are now.
Appreciate it.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the fiscal year 2020 BJAG application and acceptance of the award.
Second.
All right, got a motion and second. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you, guys. Keep up the good work on that, too.
Thank you.
All right, before agendas, do we have anything for open admin?
I want to mention something about, I would like to continue, of course, make a motion to continue the two-hour early closings on Fridays throughout the month of August that we've been doing in July.
I'd like to second it.
Any discussion on that while employees are jumping up and down?
I thought it was a tremor. I guess that's what it was.
Slight earthquake.
Dennis, Dennis, this was.
Except for the attorney's office. Did I mention that?
Dennis, you had made some comments prior to this coming up and open about the positive effect that this has had. It might go, why don't you just give a couple of those? Yeah, just, you know, because I think it's, it's.
Okay. If you want me to, since you're the president, I'll make the comment. Previous job I had, I worked through Baltimore City. I trained high school kids to work on homes of, of, what do you call it? Not unemployed, but poor people.
Homeless, yeah.
Homeless. And what we did, I had a group, I trained the teenagers, and we went into these homes, and we fixed their houses. And what I did with these teenagers, I said, I looked at the scope of work. I said, this is what we're going to get done today. And when we get done today, we're done. And they worked, and they got all the work done, and we left. At the end of the first year, I got a citation from then Mayor Schaefer, because my group did the most work of any group throughout the city of Baltimore at the time. And I believe it was because of the way we did the work. Now, I also have to say, after the third year of doing it, I was told, you can't do it that way anymore, because these kids aren't working eight hours a day. They're getting the work done in six hours or five hours, whatever happened to be. So I said, well, if you want to do it that way, then I can't run the program anymore. Let someone else do it. Now, we were the highest functioning group throughout the city, because I believe the way that it was run, this is the work you do, you get done early, then you're done. I look at this program we're doing right here on Fridays, it's the same way. You get the two hours off, but then the people are much more productive during the time that they're here. So that's one of the reasons why I suggested this months ago.
And I appreciate that explanation, because I don't think we've heard any negative at all. At least, I haven't. I don't know about you guys, but I haven't heard anything. You know, there was, there was some discussion about, you know, in the middle of tax season, when folks want to pay their taxes. I haven't heard one complaint about the fact that they can't get in after three o'clock on Friday afternoon.
If they don't have to pay their taxes, then they'd are happy.
Yeah, the only time that that happened was when Mr. Burke happened to be at the door, and he actually personally took the tax bill and took care of it. So.
Where did he get the deposit?
I left that part out.
Yeah. So I. So I think it's a, I, I was, I'll be honest with you, I was a little bit hesitant to do it, cause whenever you shut down government for whatever period of time, it can create a lot of a ruckus. But I do think that this is something that is very beneficial. I think our employees appreciate it. We can't always give, you know, as much raise as we'd love to. You know that. But this is our way, I think, of saying thank you for all that you do to everybody across the board. And so I've jumped on that train. I've jumped on the Frazier train now. So.
It's pretty crowded, but.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay. So I, I actually think, okay, I actually think it's a, it's a, it's a good idea. Now, you know, with that being said, we're not gonna, it's, it's the summer months.
Right, it's a summer thing.
You know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna talk about it for September, October, and November. This is for the summer months, and I think people genuinely appreciate the fact that it gives them just that little bit longer weekend in the summer. So I think it's a good idea. So I got a motion and second. Any other discussion?
Think it's a great idea?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Anything else for open admin?
I have one.
Then I'm done. Go ahead.
With the, got a request to support the Legion Act from the American Legion. It's actually started September 16th, 1919. And what the Legion Act does is opens up membership to veterans who served in undeclared times of war. Presently, if they were declared war, they have, can get membership, otherwise weren't eligible. So we have several things. Vietnam is one that was, not quite, wasn't declared a war, it was a.
Police action, wasn't it?
Police action, yes. And we have some other things like that. So I think the governors in support, they just asked if the county would send a letter of support, supporting the Legion Act from there, so.
I can't imagine that we wouldn't. That's, I didn't even know that, Dave. That's crazy.
Yeah, well, it's the way it was designed. Originally, it was World War I, World War II, Korean War, which still hasn't ended. And Vietnam and some of these other little things we're doing, police, you know, our veterans are involved in it, but we, they're not eligible for membership.
Actually, with Vietnam, they are, along with Iraq, Afghanistan, and police actions like Just Cause. It's those times in between that they were not considered eligible. And, you know, I, I agree with you, and I think all of us, that you raised that right hand, you're willing to go into harm's way. You should have the opportunity to participate in the American Legion and other activities, so.
So I would put that form of motion, we support it, send a letter in support.
I will second it.
Any other questions? I see where that was going. See what I did there?
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
What else do we have?
I'd like to see if my fellow colleagues would be interested in entertaining bringing Director Kay of Citizen Services before us, and brief us about the fact that potentially 58,000 senior citizens will be in this county in 11 years. At least brief us of where we're at now and where we're gonna be in the future. Give us an understanding of where we're at and educate the populace on what we're potentially faced with. I know it's long-term, but I think it's such a big potential strain upon us as a board that we should be aware of it, at least be debriefed on it, so we're conscious, and maybe see what she has in plan or mechanisms we could potentially put in place in the long term to address that. Because that size of senior population is going to have a tremendous strain upon this county. At least get debriefed on it.
I think, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's actually in line with a broader sense, and that is to have discussions from us about what is the vision of Carroll County with the changing demographics. As you shared earlier, you know, and Ms. Berry talked about the registered voters, you know, up by 50% from, you know, 20 years ago. As an example, demographics are changing. Are we best suited to take care of the quality of life of the changing demographics? We have five senior centers now.
Yes.
And should there be a sixth, seventh at some given time, but you don't know unless you understand those things. So I, I think her making a presentation, along with some of the other ideas that we should have about the, the changes that are coming in, how are we looking at this long term? So.
Thank you.
This is a good point. We're gonna need to address this.
Yep.
Good, good idea, and I think we're all in favor.
Okay.
Don't even need a motion on that one. All right, anything else for open admin?
I have something. It's that time of year, and the Clean Chesapeake Coalition has come with a bill for next year's membership, I guess. And I just wanted to know whether you guys wanted to continue to join or get out.
Are you in or are you out now?
Should I pay or not?
Yeah. This is something we need to do in open.
Okay.
Okay? And have that discussion, because it's been something we've been a part of. And I know we've had these discussions previous in anticipation of it. I provided all of you with some, some articles about their, their mission, and where they've been, where they are, where they're going. Where they've been is pretty self-explanatory. Where they are and where they're going is the thing that has me most challenged, because the biggest thing that they were after was the fact of making sure that the Conawingo Dam issue was identified as being a major polluter of the Chesapeake Bay. And I will give them, them props. They did a great job of doing that. And the governor's now recognized it, and the E's on board. Everybody's on board with that. So that's where they've been. Now, I'm not sure where they're going and what is, is, what their focus is. And I will tell you, and I think in the information that I've provided to all of you, how many counties are in that now? Just four or five?
Five, I think, to.
Yeah. Is that including us? I can't remember.
I think that includes us.
Yeah. So in my role at the state level, I've had conversations with the folks at the Maryland Association of Counties. I've also talked to some of my colleagues on the shore to get their take on, you know, if Carroll County would perhaps not be a part of that, would it affect anything? And in that conversation, I also told them, "We will support you in any manner that we have to, to ensure that you still have the things that you need on the shore to provide the resources that you want down there, especially when it pertains to the bay." Specifically, I guess, the Oyster thing, because the Oyster thing seems to be the big thing now. You know, making sure that they're in the right places and everything else. So I, I just, I'm not sure, what, what's the bill?
Seventeen thousand.
I, I'm just not sure that, that we're getting any bang for the buck at this point.
You're the only non-eastern shore county, only non-water county.
Well, I'll make a motion that we discontinue our membership in the Clean Chesapeake Coalition? In the Clean Chesapeake Coalition?
I will second that.
Okay. And, and I'm gonna support this, but I'm also gonna say that we need to continue to make sure that we are in the mix down there with our great colleagues in Talbot, Queen Anne's, Kent, Charles, the whole, the whole gamut down there. We've gotta continue to be with them in all of the things that they do. But I think we can do that without paying somebody 17 grand.
Yeah. And light of the budgetary restraints we're faced with, it's a tough decision to send the $17,000 to Eastern Shore Coalition when we're faced with cutting budgets here. Maybe in the future, if we're doing much better, we could revisit this.
Good idea. All right, I got a motion and second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Anything else? Give me, give me a chance here, Mr. Dell. Out of respect, I'll let you have a few words, but let's do the open, the agendas first, please.
Thank you all for additional Friday's early dismissals.
Now, if it's raining, it doesn't apply. If it's raining at three o'clock on Fridays, you must stay. Just you.
Just me?
Just you. All right, the week of July 29th. And again, just a reminder, it starts the fair, so we always have a great breakfast at the fair. Four of us will be at the breakfast at the fair, Wance, Rostine, Weaver, and Frazier. Nothing on Tuesday, nothing on Wednesday. Thursday, the first, we come back for open session with topics to include the health and dental insurance rates that, that Frazier wouldn't let me get through today. Access control phase two. We're gonna buy a John Deere, perhaps. We might get some Ford Fusions, some Chevy Equinox, restoration of Quail Meadows Pathway, Medicare Patrol grant application, and we're gonna have closed on land acquisition as well. At 3:00 PM is the Veterans Advisory Council booth for each fair. Commissioner Weaver will be standing. What are you gonna, are you just gonna stand there, Weaver? What are you gonna do?
Hand up.
I'm volunteering.
You're welcome to join, man.
We're volunteering at the booth.
Okay. Are you gonna be there, too?
We're just supporting the Veterans Advisory Council.
Okay, all right. All right. Nothing on Friday. Saturday, the third, is an Eagle Scout ceremony at Green Mount Church. Commissioner Weaver at 10:00 AM. Thousands of people will be tuning in on Sunday for the Commissioners' Report. Another Eagle Scout at 2:00 PM at the American Legion in Sykesville, Commissioner Rostine. And then Dream Big Union Bridge Cookout is in Union Bridge at 3:00 PM that day.
Have you attended that?
List me on that, because I might scoot by there as well.
Good.
Are they have, I heard they're having fresh duck on the grill.
Only, only though.
They're chewy.
You may not want that duck.
Anything else for the, for that week?
Please, please go out there and visit Union Bridge. They'd love to have your attendance.
All right, the week of the fifth, nothing until Wednesday, eve, or morning. I have the Farm Museum Advisory Board at 9:30, and then Commissioner Rostine has the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 6:00 PM that day. Thursday, the eighth, open session. Topics to include Safe and Stable Families Grant Awards, Youth and Family Award, Management Assessment Program Certification through Citizen Services, Triage Beds, Tot Lot Replacement at Deer Park. We've got a Critical Farm Program we're gonna look at. We've got some discussion with county staff on proposed legislation. That's the beginning of looking at.
And that's few as well?
Yeah, right, right. And we're gonna talk about what we'd like to see. Gosh, that'll be here before you know it.
Yeah.
Legislation in January. And you'll have a, you'll make a decision on today's, this afternoon's purchasing protest. And then at 1:00 PM, we have a work session and to continue our efforts on the comprehensive rezoning. Commissioners' Report, is Commissioner Weaver that week?
Actually, that will be Commissioner Rostine that week.
Okay.
I am doing this week for him. He will be doing that week for me.
All right, flip-flop.
Oh, you, you don't wanna do two in a row?
No.
And then Commissioner Rostine and I will be attending a Vietnam Veteran Pinning Ceremony at Pritz Funeral Home that we've been asked to participate in at 1:00 PM. So if anyone else would like to be there, that's fine. But Mr. Ed and I were, they reached out to us and asked if we'd be a part of that. Anything else for those two weeks? All right, that's all that I have. Now, we don't normally do this, but because I have a, and all of us have a tremendous amount of respect for you, Mr. Dell, I'll give you the last word this morning.
I've sat here just as a matter of interest, and I can't think.
Come up to, can you get him, yeah, get him on the mic so that, cause Matt's gonna be banging on the door back there.
Sitting here this morning and observing, I can't think of a darn thing to yell at you about.
So. Thank you.
And as far as the charter's concerned, I'm 94 years old and my bride's 90, so I don't expect to be around here to see all this come about. But I, I've been very impressed with what you've done this morning and your efficiency. It's very interesting to see how our government works, and I don't think the public knows how the government works. You have, at my time, we had 13 departments, and each department had a director, and we met one hour a week with each one of those departments. And it's, it's no way that I can see one person making decisions that you are making here this morning. So keep up the good work, and I appreciate you, what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Dell, it's always an honor to have you and your wife in our chambers. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, I'll entertain a motion to recess until 1:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go to re-